Adam? Is Adam Ben Harrington's replacement?
Yes.
Yeah. I was, he seems great.
At six thirty, I will call the Regional School Committee to order. We do not have any virtual members. Hi Doug. I did not receive any public comment, written or otherwise. Are you making public comments? Okay. So, the operating protocol, Subcommittee has been working on a public comment preamble, which I was going to start with tonight, and then we can bring it back. Having recently gone to the M A S E conference, it is best practice, from what I have learned, to include some parameters and expectations for that. So I have also, on the agenda, under the Public Comment section, attached our policy, B E D H, which is our policy that outlines the public comment. Okay, so, thank you for attending the public meeting in the Amherst Pelham Regional School Committee. This meeting is held in accordance with open meeting law and Robert's Rules of Order. The Committee oversees the Amherst Pelham Regional Schools and has purview in the following areas. One, employment and compensation evaluation of the superintendent, review and approval of fiscally responsible annual budget. Three, establish overreaching our educational goals. And four, develop policies as guides for administrative action to strive for continual improvement, educational programming of the district. The Chair of the Committee presides over the meeting, including acknowledgement of speakers during public comment. Public comment is a period opportunity for the Committee to receive the opinion of its constituents on school committee business. Comments should at all times be respectful. Objective criticism regarding matters within the school committee purview may be offered during public comment. However, the Committee will not hear personal complaints of school personnel, students, and members of our community. Under most circumstances, administrative channels are the proper means for these grievances. Our students and staff have a right to privacy. The Chair of the Committee reserves the right to, after a warning, terminate comment which is not protected by the First Amendment. The Committee respectfully requests the public wishing to make public comment, keep its comments under three minutes into matters under the purview of the Committee as previously stated. In accordance with policy B E D H, we now welcome members of the audience to make public comment. Please clearly state your name and affiliation with the district.
So when you read that before, so you want to walk with me and notice? You don't want me to put it in the paper, because I have that option.
So, my public comment today is about blackness. I mean, I look at the current school committee, and it's really a bunch of white faces. And I'm saying black, not a person of color. And I really want to address the way I perceive Dr. Z is treated by you, her bosses, as well as the school committee. She's a black woman that has inherited a shit show. And you guys expect, and this is just what always happened with black people. We are always given these tasks, and we're held to such a higher standard than other people. And it's problematic. I mean, I have watched multiple, I've attended multi, I really don't, you know, you guys, I really have kinda, I'm resting. Because, you know, one of my friends, Sanjay Anderson, who, Dr. Anderson, who was the person helping Carolyn Gardner when all that stuff was happening. I remember her saying to me a couple of years ago, she's like, Georgia, you have to rest, because black women die young. And I don't want to die young. So guess what? I stepped away from the union, and I'm taking care of myself. I looked at Dr. Z the other day and said, you're looking good. Because she had lost so much weight, she was looking haggard. So what I'm asking you guys to do is to be mindful. Keep that in your thoughts when you're dealing with her, and give her the same courtesy you gave to Mike and you gave to Doug. Because I have sat here, and Doug refused to answer any questions, and you guys did nothing. And I want, you know, I am just putting you guys on notice, and I'm just hoping, because I don't want to have to bring the social justice warriors out. I really don't want to have to show up here with them. Do you know what I'm saying? So I'm asking you guys to do it. You know, she, she has a job to do, and I think she's doing a hell of a job. You know what I'm saying? You guys, what you wanted her to do? Ignore the court order, say, can I arrest her? She's a black woman. She have her life, her life goes on after Amherst. Because I'm sure this is not a destination job for her. And before, I don't know how much time I have, but I want to read you. This is a song by Bob Marley called War. And it says, "Honored the philosophy which holds one race superior and another inferior is finally and permanently discredited and abandoned. Everywhere is war, Mr. War. That until they are no longer first-class and second-class citizens of any nation, until the color of a man's skin is of no more significance than the color of his eyes, Mr. War. Until the basic human rights are equally guaranteed to all without regard to race, a disorder." So I'm just reminding you guys, because we're feeling it. Dr. Z doesn't have any time to deal with what's happening to the black people in the district. But I suppose a black, we're there, me and Mika, we will hold down the fort, I can speak for myself, so people basically are going to leave me alone. But I'm just asking you guys to show her the same respect you showed the previous white superintendent. And if you guys need training, we can get somebody to give you some real training on really and truly, because you do need it.
And like I said, I don't really want to have to rear up the troops, because, I mean, we can go there, I don't want to do that.
Thank you, Georgia. Okay. Next up is reports from liaisons and Subcommittee members. So, recently, there were the Deb and Sarah? I feel like there was someone else with you, when you had the.
Anna, well.
Anna, okay. Went to speak on behalf of the school committees for the Chapter Seventy, so their information is attached. I don't know if you guys wanted to speak to that at all? No is fine, just offering the opportunity.
I would urge everyone to read it. It's amazing, every school district is in the same position, or even worse than we are. It's just, it's just heartbreaking. We'll see what, I mean, we don't know what will come of this. But we were happy to be there and speak on behalf of Amherst and Amherst Pelham. Anna spoke for Shute's Berry.
Excellent. Thank you. Anna and then Deb.
I would just like to encourage everybody to write their legislators and their City Council members or Select Board members, to encourage them also to speak out and to send public comment to both Desi and the legislators that are relevant to them. This is a critical time, this is the time that we really need to push. And we are the school committee, and it's our job to fight for this funding, and we need to be vocal.
Deb?
So yeah, I want to plus one both Anna and Sarah, and just say that the fact that we have the same concerns as every other school district that spoke, should speak to our critics who say, it's us, it's Amherst, it's the region. It's not. And then, in terms of what Anna said, there are initiatives now. The M T A Fiscal Crisis Action Team, is that the full name of it? Is encouraging the legislature to pass a supplemental budget, twenty twenty-five budget to fully fund rural schools. So, there's plenty of advocacy available, and in particular, the rural school part is a part that really directly impacts this, rural school aid directly impacts this district. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Also, attached is information that Deb, Tim presented at the Leverett Town Meeting regarding the middle school roof. I don't know if you, which is attached to here. Also, Tim, if you wanted to speak to that? Same, also, no is fine. Report is there, if anyone would like to read it.
Nothing to say, it's just a brief summary of all the information we received on the middle school roof proposal, formatted, presented to voters, which, you know, we may find useful again sometime, but mostly, I just wanted to put it on record.
Thank you, go ahead.
Was it voted on? I mean.
I got the, I got our chairs' approval to share it.
Are you asking the other way? Are you asking if Leverett voted on the roof?
Yes, has Leverett voted on, or pocket approval, or whatever?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep. Okay. Deb?
I just wanted to say, Tim, I thought the document was excellent. And thank you for putting, it looked like it was a fair amount of work, thank you for putting a lot together.
Excellent, thank you. Okay. Our first matter of business is establishing an exam fee revolving account. Shannon, or Dr. Z, you want to take this one?
Yep. So it was, this request was brought to me from the school level to establish a revolving fund for our exam fees. Right now, it's processed through Student Activities, but there are some wrinkles with that, and it would be more efficient if we had set up a revolving fund in our accounting system for this. So, right now, we do collect exam fees for the S A T and the A P placement exams and the P S A T. And those are currently collected all in cash and checks, and then deposited into a Student Activities Fund. But with, with the volume and the, there is no option right now to pay electronically, but if we had this set up as a revolving fund, they would be able to take advantage of the unit pay system that we have to accept electronic payments. And then when we had to pay, or have to pay practor stipends and purchase exam materials, we would be able to do so out of that revolving fund. So, I wanted to bring this forth to establish and see if you would vote on, on this, to allow this moving forward, and I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Shannon. Jennifer?
I'm going to go ahead and make the motion, and then I'll speak to it. I move that the Amherst Pelham Regional School Committee votes to establish the creation of the exam fee revolving account as outlined in the memo dated October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. I think this is a great idea. You had me at electronic payment, because I recently had to pay for my daughter to take the P S A T, and I had to like write a check, put it in an envelope, hand it to my teen, and then she had to go to a classroom and put it in a box on a table. And I, I don't fault at all anyone involved in this process, I'm sure they were doing the best with what they could, but I thought, surely there has to be a better way to do this. So, I am all for this, this motion. Thank you for bringing it to us.
Second.
Thank you, Tim. Any further discussion, Deb?
Is there any downside?
I cannot think of one.
No, I don't think that there's any downside, I think it's a cleaner, better process.
Thank you.
Sarah?
Yeah, great idea. I'm, I'm curious, and this would have applied to the, I guess, current system, but I know students can ask for fee waivers, and I wonder, would this fund be, I guess, funding the cost, whatever that the student's family does not pay, will come out?
I would have to check with. Yeah, I have to check with Principal Sadeek for that. I, I know, I'm quite certain he has a process, and I know, unless Dr. Z, you have to answer to that.
Many times, these national organizations, the fee waivers are basically like, given straight to the, to, to the company. Like, it's actually like a bond kind of, or a check, or a device, it wouldn't be paid into us, it would be sent straight to the company, for many of these, like P S A T and S A T. It's not really something that's paid to us.
So they would be billing a lesser amount, essentially?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Because we would submit the waivers in with our, our fees.
Great, thank you. Any further discussion? We're ready to vote. Excellent. All those in flavor, please raise your hand. Perfect, love it. It is unanimous. All right, moving right along. Next up, F Y twenty-five excess and deficiencies. There, Dr. Z, Shannon?
Yes, it's good, the Shannon Show right now. So, in, at the end of October, we received the certification of our E N D, and that was over the maximum amount we are allowed to have in our E N D. And that maximum amount is five percent over the next year's budget. So for twenty-five, it would be five percent over the F Y twenty-six budget. And it was over by a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, and that notification automatically is sent out to the four towns as soon as it's certified, and to myself. So I, I wanted to present to you on this, because there's two things that we have to do, or an option of two things that we can do to remedy this. And one of those options is to take the hundred and fifty thousand dollar, a hundred and fifty-one thousand and change, and credit that back to the towns in the current year, or in the next, next fiscal year, reduce those assessments by that amount according to our regional agreement. And so at the end of this, ultimately, we have to vote on which option we move forward with, but I want to talk a little bit about how we got here. So in that memo that I presented, I put what we budgeted for F Y twenty-five on that revenue, and then I put in what was actually received. So, our operating assessment and capital assessment came in exactly what was budgeted, those come from the towns. The Chapter Seventy comes in, came in slightly higher, and that has to do with when we originally developed the budget, you know, we start at thirty dollars per student, for, for the increase in Chapter Seventy, but as we know, we vote the budget before we know everything that's happening on the state level, and so oftentimes, there is a slight difference for Chapter Seventy, what we actually receive, and, and that overage, you know, rolls into the E N D, which we use to support the operating budget in the next fiscal year. And same with the regional transportation reimbursement that we receive. We don't know necessarily at the time that we budget, how much is going to be reimbursed, the percentage, and so that can vary from year to year, so we make our best guess and look at what we spent in total in the prior year, to, to figure out what we budget for that. For charter school tuition, we also make an estimate. Charter school is a little unique, because the first year that a student goes, a hundred percent of that tuition is reimbursed to the school. The second year, only sixty percent is reimbursed. The third year, forty percent is reimbursed back to the district for that student, and after that, there's no further reimbursement. So, when you see a higher amount of tuition, that reimbursement that we've received for charter, it's likely due to new admission that we just started paying, or that person just entered, and we get that hundred percent reimbursement. So we don't get the, so right now, for F Y twenty-six, we don't receive the actual numbers for charter, and what the levels are, until January, Q one is not posted on Desi, because those are estimates. Q two for charter is what they actually post, and that'll be available on the security portal in January, so I'll be taking a look at that for the F Y twenty-seven budget for what we anticipate there. So, that's partly why there's a difference. The Medicaid revenue, that is, it's been around this number, floating between one fifteen, one thirty, one forty, for a few years, so that's pretty stable, and that's reimbursement for Medicaid and special education needs. The interest revenue, though, is what really changed where our E N D would land for this year, and that was because there was only thirty-two thousand budgeted, and we ended up with four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, and, and that's a massive change from what we're used to. So on the second page of the document that I listed, I wanted to give you a graph of how much interest revenue we've actually taken in, and I went back to twenty seventeen to present. So from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-two, you know, it ranged from twelve thousand dollars to thirty-three thousand dollars. And then in twenty twenty-three, we received ninety-five thousand, and that was the biggest jump we've had, and I, I wrote a date in here, but I don't remember what it was. I don't think we saw that number until, like, yeah, two thousand, since two thousand and nine. And at that time, in twenty twenty-four, if you look at that, at the beginning of twenty twenty-four, before we knew we were actually getting two hundred and seventy-seven thousand for twenty twenty-four, we had built the budget for twenty twenty-five already, and, and we received a, a lot more funding than we did. So, part of this is due to the interest rates. Our interest rates in the prior years was point one-two percent, very low. It, it went up a little bit in twenty twenty-three to one and a half percent, and then in twenty twenty-four, the average was around four point one-two percent. And right now, the average for twenty twenty-five is three point eight-nine percent. And so the interest is variable throughout the year, it goes up and down every month, we don't have a set control of what that interest rate number will be. And also, the, the interest that we collect, it's, it's for that year, so this could cross fiscal years, if you know what I mean, because it goes on the bank schedule, if that makes sense, the calendar. So, with that, that's why we're in this position that we are in. And I've attended some webinars, and spoken with Masbo a little bit about this, of things we can do differently, and would help us, and for twenty-seven, I, I'm going to use an average to develop this number. We did increase this in the twenty-six budget to a hundred thousand at the time, recognizing that the interest revenue was increasing, but also being conservative, because if those rates do go down, and it's highly volatile, we don't want to be in a position where we don't collect what we were going to receive, and now we're short on our budget. So, with that, we have two things. We can reduce the twenty-six assessments, and that isn't a preference. It would be smoother and cleaner if we were to make this adjustment on the twenty-seven budget. So I also attached the joint guidance from the D O R and Desi, as part of this presentation, that kind of explained both in advance of this. So I will go ahead and take questions.
Anna?
What is the interest being paid on?
All of our money in the bank.
Which?
Our, so when, so while we have a financial system, like, that money doesn't sit in our, like, accounting software, it all sits in a bank account. And then the treasurer reconciles every month, and however much we have in the bank, and what the interest rate is, it collects interest on that.
And so we are paid, like, all of the towns allocate all of their money, and it goes into our bank account at the beginning of the year, and then we get interest on it until we use it? And then?
Yes.
And then there's capital?
Yep, so, I, well, we don't, we do quarterly payments for the assessments, so they come in quarterly, and when they go into our bank account, it collects interest. Capital, if we have any cash, any type of form of cash we have, that's collecting interest that we have in our bank, like our physical cash.
So would you say that the vast increase in interest is due to rates and not to capital?
I would say it's, it's more because of the rates.
Deb?
So, two questions, Shannon. One, I didn't understand on the second page, about when, if you move any and all access of the transportation reimbursement into a revolving account, and it, we can move any and all access of transportation reimbursement into a revolving account with the school committee's vote. In doing this, the transportation fund would need to be spent in the next fiscal year. Can you, like, fill that in a little bit? That's just.
Yep. Yeah, so if we didn't have the overage from the regional transportation reimbursement, if that overage, if we move that by vote to a revolving fund, that overage doesn't roll into our E N D.
Okay.
And, and so then, we would have to, so if we did that for twenty-five, we would have to spend, just say, a hundred thousand. That hundred thousand from that revolving fund in fiscal year twenty-six, you can't carry it over further, you have to use it in the following year. So, that is a long-term strategy that I was thinking of, is that every year, if we were to put whatever excess is in, and then that following year, we spend it, and then the next year, we could put in, what, the same amount as last year, plus whatever extra, and start building it up until, and it'll take years, until the point where we can then treat it like circuit breaker, where we claim it in one year, receive the money the following year, and spend it in the next, and know exactly how much to budget. But it'll take. But it'll take, you know, a while, probably a few years or so.
That's clever. Um, my second question is, do either of these methods that we have in front of us at the moment affect the base going forward for twenty twenty seven, I guess, or twenty twenty, it must be twenty twenty seven?
Twenty, yes. No, not the base. So the base for twenty six, um, that'll still be the base. Then for twenty seven, um, it'll essentially be, say, uh, all of the um towns have their assessment amounts that will end up being voted. And I guess you could call it a discount and say, hey, um, Amherst, your, your amount is one million dollars and you have and seventy eight percent of a hundred and fifty one thousand, I don't know, we'll just say a hundred thousand. Because this was over, we're using a hundred thousand dollars extra in E and D, so your um assessment will now be nine hundred thousand because of that reduction. And then the same for the other three towns. If that makes, does that make sense?
Perfect, thank you.
Uh, Sarah?
Yeah, I just wanted to continue on Anna's question. The interest payments over three years increased forty fold. All right, from twelve thousand to four hundred thirty five thousand. So the interest rates surely did not, maybe I missed, missed him when he said, did the interest rate increase forty fold? I really doubt it, so there must be a lot more cash on hand.
Yeah, it was, it was at point one two percent. It, well, this was an average, we looked at the year.
Okay.
Yeah, so it was less than a percentage. It was, it was, yeah, point one two and now we're.
Okay, that is forty fold. It's amazing. To four, from point one to four. Yeah, okay.
Jennifer?
All right.
I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion. I move that the regional school committee votes to include the one hundred fifty one thousand, six hundred twenty dollars in excess of five percent as a revenue source for its proposed upcoming fiscal year's budget with the amount credited and a portion to each member municipality in accordance with the regional school district agreement.
Second. Is that your project? Excellent. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Excellent. All right, it is unanimous. Thank you, Shannon. Continuing on with the Shannon Show?
Okay, um, so I actually um have Adam Feltman here to help with this discussion. Um, this is for the Highland electric buses uh that we are leasing and they're putting in all of the charging infrastructure. There is an easement that the school committee has to vote on to grant EverSource the ability to install and maintain and repair the electrical lines on the property. Um, and then I attached the documents that went along with this. And then I have Adam here to answer the technical questions that I will not be able to.
All right. Are there questions? Deb, then Sarah.
So when the town does this for town things, I trust that they kind of, this is part of their normal business, but this is not something we do routinely. So I'm assuming, and I'm just asking for verification, that the process is been verified by people whom, yes, I'm getting the nod, thank you.
Yes.
That's all.
Sarah?
Yeah, so they already put in all the electric, they put in the infrastructure already. So, right, that's what all the digging was, right? Just before school was getting started. Am I wrong? There was a lot of trenching out in front of the middle school and all through the parking lot to the back.
Um, they put in the conduit. We're waiting on the transformer from EverSource.
Okay, so?
And they're not willing to place the transformer without the easement.
All right. Fine, because, yeah, I would have thought we'd given it already, but um one thing that's not specified, and, and maybe it's never specified and it just goes without saying, but just because they, we give them the easement, let's say, I don't want them just waltzing onto school property and like digging things up anytime they want, you know, because we are running a school and it's a busy place and so they would be coordinating, yeah, with the with middle school or the district, somebody, they're not just gonna come in and dig up the parking lot during the school day.
Uh, I can answer that question. Um, typically, if we have an issue with EverSource, um, someone from facilities will issue a trouble ticket. And um then EverSource will come out and address the issue. Um, they will have, uh, you know, it will be within their rights to dig up um, those areas that will be eased. But that's necessary for them to maintain that infrastructure, if that makes sense.
Oh, yeah, I'm concerned about the coordination, so that it's not disrupting school.
So?
Yeah.
I would, oh, Adam, so I would say my experience thus far, Sarah, has been that whenever, for example, um, they might have a planned outage, they have contacted like um Mike or operations or our office and said, you know, we have a rotating outage that's gonna affect your area, it's gonna be off for twenty minutes. Um, the, the coordination is for as much as it can be planned. Um, ahead of time, it usually is, they try and contact that, again, the facilities or someone in operations to coordinate what they would need to do. Sometimes there are things that are unplanned, um, and usually they don't impact especially schools without having a conversation with somebody from facilities or my office.
Thank you.
That's been my experience thus far. Things could change, but that's what it's been thus far.
The, um, I will say that the easement was part of the original presentation that we received. Um, however, when it came time to do the easement specifically, I checked with the attorney and we do need to specifically vote on that. Um, which is why this is, so we've sort of approved this already, but this part needs to be specifically approved. Um, Jennifer?
I move that the regional school committee authorize Chair Sarah Best Kenny to execute and deliver in the name of the Amherst Pelham Regional School District an easement presented to this meeting and to do any and all other acts to effectuate the foregoing.
Second.
Is that Bridget again?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? Um, Anna?
Is this a permanent easement or is it a time-limited easement? Or some other way limited easement? Because I, removing easements is a big pain in the butt. And so if we ever tear down the middle school and decide to sell the property, then selling it with a huge easement in it is difficult. And I just want to know if there's any sort of limit on the easement.
Lots of properties have easements on them, they're not.
And they're a big pain in the butt if you don't want them. And if we get rid of the property, it's, keeps the easement unless we remove it. And so I'm just asking, does it ever end or do we have to go through a whole new process to remove it?
I don't, I don't see in the contract a space where it says it's temporary until X date. Um, so I'm going to assume based on that information that it, it does not end.
It, it does say perpetual.
Okay.
Um, and my property has an easement.
Mine too.
Most of our properties have easements.
Yep. Uh, William?
Is this, that's highlighted in gray, is that the easement?
Yes.
So it goes underneath the sidewalks? I guess? So if they have to, I guess, my question is, if they have to access the easement, who's on the hook to replace the sidewalks? If it goes underneath the sidewalks?
In my experience that um EverSource would repair. However, Highland might also be willing to um chip in. I, I honestly don't know a hundred percent certainty answer to that question.
Uh, Tim?
Oh, I didn't have my hand up.
Oh, sorry. Uh, Deb?
You mentioned um the transformer, does EverSource have, have it in hand? Do you know, I, we took us a year to get ours. And I know that with the elementary school building project, they ordered them like almost a year ahead of time because there is a backlog.
According to our electric bus contractor, they have it in hand, they're just waiting on the easement to place it.
Great.
Great, all right. Now, any further comments, questions, discussion? Are we ready for a vote? All those in favor of the motion as written, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, all those opposed? Nope, you get to vote however you like. And, all right. So seven, final vote is seven with, seven yes, one no. And one absent. All right. Back to the Shannon Show.
Yes, okay, so the next thing uh on the agenda is the um middle school roof and uh Pelham's ability to use cash and not participate in the borrowing. Um, so Pelham did save and has been saving um to contribute to the roof. Um, but they like to save on uh interest. So um in doing so, I um spoke to our financial advisors and they had stated that uh we would need to have an inter municipal agreement that would need to be voted by the school committee and then the town select board and the town council of Amherst in order to allow this to happen. Um, so prior to bringing this forward, I met with um the finance chairs from each of the towns um and let them weigh in on what their thoughts were and they, um, we were also on the call with the um financial advisors and Sarah Best was there as well. And there was no, um, there was consensus that, that, that was okay from those towns and they'll, they'll bring it forth. They didn't really see any concerns. The only thing that showed up uh was if Pelham owed more money or they paid too much money, how would that be resolved? Um, so they had asked that we make sure that a language for that was in the agreement. Um, and at the time that I wrote this, uh, I didn't have that language approved yet. It was in the agreement I attached, but it wasn't approved by the bond council. But after this was posted, bond council did approve it, so the official document is in fact attached and what I wrote for the proposed motion, if you choose to move forward with this, can be slightly amended because it is in the agreement. Um, that Pelham uh at the end of the project will be reconciled whether they owe um need to increase or decrease any of their fundings. Um, so with that, I will take any questions.
Uh, Tim?
I move to allow the town of Pelham to utilize cash and not participate in district borrowing for the middle school roof project as outlined in the memo dated November twenty fifth, twenty twenty five and inter municipal agreement attached pending amendment mentioned above.
Second.
Any further discussion? Deb?
Do we need to re-vote? Does this change the other towns' votes to authorize the borrowing?
No, it doesn't.
Thank you.
Uh, Jennifer?
Sorry, but did, did I hear that we don't need the amendment language in the motion?
Yes, we don't need the amendment language.
Friendly amendment, accepted.
Well, but how amended? Do you strike that whole last pending?
I move to allow the town of Pelham to utilize cash and not participate in district borrowing for the middle school roof project as outlined in the memo dated November twenty fifth, twenty twenty five and inter municipal agreement attached.
I accept the friendly amendment.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Excellent, look at us. All in favor, it is unanimous.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Um, okay, the next thing, last but not least for me. Um, we have the quarter one report for um the region. And right now, we are at twenty one uh percent of the total budget. And uh that's about normal for where the region sits at, at the Q one report if we look back in, in prior years. Um, as you hear me say all the time, the first quarter, you see salaries track lower than expected because when staff, most of the staff return um after the summer. And a lot of the contract uh lines in here are for summer, things that are front-loaded at the beginning of the year. So that's really normal at this point. Um, in our education expenses, the um regular education, there's a lot of uh purchases made upfront that um staff need for their classrooms. Uh, and also the uh translation costs we have encumbered for the entire year. And for some reason on this one, it doesn't break out E L L separate, so it's rolled into regular education. Um, and, and that was a big increase for, for the encumbrance here of why so much is being utilized upfront. But that is to be uh spent for the remainder of the year. Um, and for special education, um, that, this is tracking on target. The full amount of circuit breaker and I D A have been applied in this budget area. So um that's a good sign for, for where we are in um, in terms of the school year at this point. The school administration is higher than we normally would see, would see. Um, our copier and printers uh contracts, we, were significantly higher than um the last year, they've had an increase in their rates, so um that's something we'll have to make an adjustment for in twenty seven. Um, and, and that's really what was driving the school administration increase there. Uh, for central administration, it's largely on target. Um, with the exception of the legal fees, because at this point, we've utilized about sixty percent of what we budgeted in, within Q one. Um, so that has, uh, raises the central administration to about uh forty five percent. For facilities, this is higher, um, as you've heard me say in other places, that um, we have to contract out for the plumber and the HVAC staff that are unfilled positions. Um, and we haven't been able, we keep posting them, but we're not able to fill them. Uh, so what I would like to do in Q two is to ask uh school committee to approve at a um, a budget transfer to move the salary amount that's for those positions from the payroll into the facilities line because that's where all of the spending is going to come from and there is money there. Um, so I would like to move it. And then in FY twenty seven, we're making the decision to actually budget those salary positions in the contracted services line. Um, the elevator has been the topic of discussion. That is not in the Q one report because the purchase happened in um Q two and we're utilizing the remaining funding from an ADA capital line that we have to offset that cost. And then the remaining will hit in the facilities line. Um, and, but you'll see that in the Q two report in January. Um, the risks and benefits, I highlighted this just so um uh, the other insurance and benefits portion, uh, because it's seventy one percent, I didn't want anybody to be concerned um with that, but we pay our Hampshire County assessment upfront in one payment at the beginning of the year. It actually saves us a little bit of money to do that. Um, so that's why that's at seventy one percent. Um, overall though, region's in, in good shape and going as we expect with some exceptions to some facility needs that we have. Um, but we will see uh Q two of where things are trending.
Thank you. Uh, Deb?
Sorry, it's just what I do. Um, uh, clarification, um, you said that in the text, it said the region's legal fees have utilized sixty percent of the projected budget. Is that just because it says forty, and I think you said forty five percent, and am I not understanding?
Yes, so sixty percent of that specific budget line.
Okay, yep.
Yeah.
And then um before, um, part of, part of a conversation with Amherst town councillors is possibly sharing HVAC expertise with the town? So I don't know how that conversation would take place, but before we kind of move in the direction of moving that to a contracted line, um, that conversation should, can, should exist or continue or something.
Uh, Dr. Z?
They, I, thank you for that, Deb. One of the things that we um, and the team is working on right now is updating some of our M O U. is updating some of our MOUs. The town has been charging the region and the district for different things that they weren't charging for before. So strategically, what Shannon is asking for us to do is even in moving that, we would have to consider moving it because we may have to pay the cost to the town in terms of services. And that would be the correct line where that money would need to be coming from.
Thank you.
I did have one last question.
Follow up?
Yep. So, good job with all these nice green and yellows. But I'm a little confused because I went back to other quarter ones just because I don't remember seeing that nice yellow or green even in the special ed line. And can, the last two years, those lines were well over a hundred percent at this point in, in the year. So yay, and huh, can you, can you elaborate a little bit and help, help us understand why that's doing so amazingly well?
So I don't think it's that we don't have things to spend money on for special education. I, I'd have to go back and see if maybe the full amount of the circuit breaker and IDEA wasn't applied to that. That could be the possibility of why. But I figured that's, because we have to subtract that from the amount budgeted, if we don't apply that full amount, it's not seeing the full picture for where we are. So I just applied the full amount and then we will see the full picture as we move forward.
Thank you.
Alright, were there any other hands up?
Great.
Okay. Well, thank you for our long Shannon Show tonight, Shannon.
Yes, absolutely.
We appreciate you staying and all of your information. Okay. Moving on, presentation on MCAS data.
So before Tanya starts, I'd like to just say thank you, Shannon. Great job for the Shannon Show and now it's time to turn over to the Tanya Show, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon.
Happy Thanksgiving.
There, good evening. Thank you all for the opportunity to present the regional data. I will be presenting both middle school and high school. As you take a look at our performance for categories for performance levels, I want to remind you that most times when I'm talking, I'll talk about meeting and exceeding together. So both meeting plus exceeding. Then I want to make sure that we do a couple things. Back into twenty twenty-four, the, on question two, we voted to, as a Commonwealth, we voted to remove MCAS as a graduation requirement. But I need to remind us that we are actually state mandated to give the MCAS test as well as it being a part of our participation rate is, is actually routed as well. It's important to also know that with MCAS, when we look at the data, what we're trying to do is see how our instruction is improving. And also it's a part of state accountability, but also it has a component to scholarships when students become seniors. So let's dig into our regional high school. First thing, I want to start with participation rate. We are mandated by state law to participate in the MCAS. As you look at the three years, you'll notice that when we had MCAS as a graduation requirement, we were at ninety-eight and ninety-nine percent. And the minute that it was removed, we have plummeted to eighty-seven, seventy-five, and eighty-two percent. It's important to know that for our accountability rating with the state, it is a part of that metric. So we want to do our best to encourage families and students to take the MCAS so that we're at our ninety-five percent required rate. Also, if you look at the top, you'll see that I give all three, English, math, and science, the long-term overview for those three, but we're going to dig into them separately. And if we go to ELA, we'll start there. We are on the rise for English. If you notice, we're at seventy percent now, above our twenty twenty-two score. Are getting closer to pre-pandemic levels. Overall, here's where we are. We are pretty steady in terms of our proficiency rates from last year. However, there were almost twenty percentage point gains for our Asian and multirace student groups. And I also want to highlight student growth. When we think about student growth, we're thinking about the progress that students are making compared to previous students. And our student growth made double digits across all of our subgroups. So it's, so if you think about, even if our proficiency stays the same, when the growth is, is increasing, what that means is we're getting closer to closing the gap. So if we had our proficiency rating staying the same, but our growth being low, that means we're going to widen the gap. So this is a promising sign. If you move to math, when we look at math, again, our growth is double-digit gains from last year with proficiency staying the same. But again, our Asian and multirace students have had double-digit gains there. I also should point out that the reason you see a bar over black students is because you have to have more than ten students to share that data. The number is too small and would call out particular students if we looked at it that way. So you'll notice that anytime you see a subgroup being covered, it's because the number is ten or below. When we go to science, you'll notice there's no growth data there, but that's because there's not science, multiple years of science testing. But in science, the proficiency rate, there is a slight decline, but there is modest gains for our low-income and Hispanic students for science at the high school. Let's take a look at the regional middle school. So again, not as sharper decline as the high school, but participation rates are below our required state ninety-five percent participation point. So we want to make sure we do a better job of encouraging families and to have their students there to take the test. You'll see that the information is broken out for both ELA and math for both seventh grade and eighth grade with science being administered in the eighth grade. And for both middle and high school, I think it's important to also point out that we're above the state averages in all of our categories for our testing. When we take a look at middle school ELA, one of the things you'll notice there's, are, if you remember from our last year data, we have slight increases in growth and proficiencies. But we want to highlight double-digit growth gains and for black students in both proficiency and growth. So here, you'll notice that other races is the bar that's marked out because there are fewer than ten students there. But for our black students this year in ELA, there have been double-digit gains. When we take a look at math, they have, there are double-digit gains both by our Hispanic and black students from last year, as well as growth and proficiency gains for both our EL students, our SE students. All, all of those subgroups have had double-digit gains. Now, I know that we are not where we want them to be, but as long as we're growing and increasing those proficiency ratings, we'll getting closer to our targets and moving in the right direction.
I just wanted to point out that mathematics was the area that the middle school was recognized by the state for achieving or exceeding pre-pandemic levels. And so what Tanya is saying is that it may not be where we want it to be, but we have made green gains because we've exceeded our pre-pandemic levels at the middle school and was recognized at the state level.
Just a quick question. Can, what, what do you mean by double-digit gains? I'm not seeing that jump out at me.
So compare, compared to twenty twenty-four, so if you look at our black students in twenty twenty-four, they were at eleven percent proficiency with meeting and exceeding.
So what table? I'm, I guess I'm looking at the wrong table. Okay.
There's a table, there's a table where, if you look on the top bar, Deb, there's a, there's a, it says Amherst Regional Middle School. And there's a bar, a table that says meeting or exceeding and it goes across by years.
Yeah.
Okay, that's where we are.
Thank you.
But, but sorry, but I'm sorry, on Deb's thread, it doesn't show that, it doesn't show a trend by racial group.
Right.
No, I kept, I was just going to tell you about it. I kept, but if you look at last year's presentation, you'll see the gains. And I'm happy to redo it and send that to you. And then if we look at science, again, science doesn't have any growth measures, but in science, both our Hispanic, black, actually not just both, but Hispanic, black, multiracial, SE groups and five oh four students have significant gains in terms of their proficiency. So again, this is looking, we're going in the right direction. We're not where we want to be. But our twenty twenty-five data has increased compared to our twenty twenty-four data. And I, what I did was at the bottom of the page, I gave you some links that can, you can dig in a little deeper if you want to go through more. So there is the DESI website that has some information, not only on accountability, but also information, data in how they're using it. There's our school and district profiles, that's in the middle, and then also on our district website. You can look at our district data there as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Tanya. Are there any follow-up questions? Jennifer?
So thank you for this data, Tanya. I'm, I'm struck by the blue bar on the grade, on the high school pages that, that, that you're not showing the black students because the, the, because it, and it's not that there aren't ten black students in grade ten, it's that there aren't ten black students in grade ten who took the exam. And so therefore, and so my one hypothesis is that black students were more likely to opt out of taking the test. Do we have, do you happen to know, or do you have data that shows percent participation by race? And is that lower for?
I can get that for you.
Yeah, thank you. Because I don't remember seeing that last year and it just, it's just jumping out at me that. I know that the performance of our students of color on MCAS is, is something that we take note of. And if we can't see it, then we can't take note of how it's improving or what the trend is.
Right, so with, and just to make sure everybody's clear, so we need more students taking the exam.
Right.
Not that I can show the ones that are ten or less, but.
I understand, yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, Bridget?
Yes, so I had first, I had two questions. The first one relates to what Jennifer was saying, which is in the past, if I remember correctly, there were some consequences to districts when they don't meet that ninety-five percent. So I was wondering if those consequences are still in place? And if so, what are they? Like administrative hurdles or what?
So it's our accountability reporting that happens at DESI. So we are on requiring assistance or intervention just to make sure that our participation rates. And one of the things I can give you right now is our participation rates were low, below the ninety-five percent mark, both with a multitude of groups, black students, white students, low-income students, Hispanic students, and students who were high needs. So it was the participation rates were low in all of those particular categories. So you have to have a participation rate of ninety-five percent, not only for your school district as a whole or the school as a whole, but also for our subgroups.
Great. And I, I'm just curious, I'll, I'll look into this after the meeting, but like, is this just happening in Amherst or is this going to be a statewide trend?
Oh, no, it's.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's across the Commonwealth once the vote happened in, in twenty twenty-four.
Perfect. So, yeah, I don't know if you'll bring them back. But, but my second question was, first off, it's great to see that the numbers are going in a positive direction and the, that the growth percentile is so high, but there's still these like really significant gaps between twenty and forty-eight percent in our subgroups that are really just striking across the board. So I have a two-part question. One is what do you think that you have been doing? Or do you have any ideas what is working in terms of increasing your growth percentile? And then what are the plans to, you know, to improve or ramp that up?
I think it's the focus on tier one instruction. We, I think differentiation is the part that's going to help us get even further along, but it is making sure that our tier one instruction, every student is having opportunities to, to really instruct, have instruction at grade level. Because remember that the MCAS is testing grade level proficiency. So even if our kids have gaps, we have to ensure that they are getting the opportunity to be engaged with instruction at the grade level. Sometimes, you know, in the past, you might teach kids, it's like, well, they're on a fourth grade level, so I'm going to teach there instead of sixth grade. Well, the problem with that is if they never get exposure to sixth grade material, they're never going to have an opportunity to reach proficiency at sixth grade. So that's what I think has increased. It's, for our regional schools, it's the departments, they are really zoning in and making sure that they look at tier one instruction across the board. And I think that has helped us tremendously.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Bridget. I have Sarah, Anna, and Deb.
Yeah, a few things. So I, I'm just not familiar with how MCAS is administered. It's not possible to make it up if you miss it, even if you're just sick that day. You can't.
There is a makeup day.
There is?
Yes.
Alright, so, okay, good. I know we can't, we can no longer require passing grade on MCAS to graduate, to receive a diploma. It's not possible to require participation in order to graduate? Like, you just got to take the test.
I'm not sure, but.
I think that would be a committee decision because our discipline, graduation requirements are at the hand of the committee. So that would be something that would have to be posed at, at the, to the subcommittee or the graduation committee, yes, the graduation requirement.
Okay. I mean, yeah, so a student might come in and then just like doodle around on the paper, but anyway. Yeah, that's a hard thing to fix, I imagine. So I want to look at, for example, slide five, five? I think it's five, ELA. And, and I think it's just, I, I'm much more able to appreciate the, the, the data, the percentage meet and exceed over the years than I am like the student growth percentile. It's just not, I don't really have a deep understanding of that yet. So what I see, and on several slides, is just a really marked decline over the years. And I, I know it's different students each year. So is this, is this COVID moving through? I mean, what? And is there any way to like really know that that's the case? Do we see these same kids like coming up through seventh and eighth? And like, and are they improving over? Because like some of them, they, they haven't started increasing, like math has just gone down and down. And that's alarming to me. And I'm not a pessimist, but I'm, you know, so that's page six, I think. From eighty percent down to sixty percent.
So one thing I want to say for twenty twenty-one, remember that was the first year from COVID. So not everyone took the test, so there might be higher numbers. So if you, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, it was still a lot of COVID kind of, we're not testing, we're not doing this, we're not doing that, we're not requiring, we're not using the scores. But twenty twenty-two is actually the first administration since COVID that was like a normal testing year. So when you look at twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one, those scores across the board seem really high for a lot of, for a lot of cases. But when you take a look, we are getting back. So when you say pre-pandemic, they're looking at twenty nineteen, before the twenty twenty year. So not getting back to twenty twenty-one, which wasn't a regular testing administration. So pre-pandemic would be before the twenty twenty year, so twenty nineteen.
And we don't see that here, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
But I can get that for you. So that way you'll be able to, to look to see true, true growth that's happening. So yes, I think as you talked about, scores going down in some subgroups or some categories of, of content. Yes, I think there is a COVID effect to that. There is a lot where when we got back, students haven't had the same level of instruction and we're just actually keep getting stronger and stronger, which is why I think there's one reason that the DESI is highlighting districts that are getting back to those pre-pandemic numbers because now we're in a place where we truly are trying to capture that, the missed information that students had from learning virtually and, and the like.
And last question, if I may, the English learners, in some cases, very low rates of proficiency. If, if by that you mean the M, M and E, M plus E, yeah. And I had thought that they took it, or maybe it's some category, took a different exam. Or is that in elementary school? I thought there was access. I didn't think they were necessarily taking MCAS. So, and, but if they have to, then that's kind of just, should I be disturbed that only eight percent are meeting and exceeding in math? That's.
So I, I would say, one first, they take. So I, I would say, one first, they take both access and MCAS, and so that is true. Um, when students are taking this, they're in tenth grade level, so for some of our L students, they could be at level one or two proficiency for, for language. So they might, yes, they have to take it, because again, it's MCAS, everybody's taking it, uh, for participation, but they aren't necessarily taking it in the language of their, their native language, so they're taking it in English. So it's not surprising that they're not scoring well, when you think, let's say, a student just got to us in tenth grade and they're taking the, um, MCAS for it. So if you look at, um, in ELA, uh, for some of them, meeting and exceeding is zero. So they, there is that to understand. It's not like access where they're doing the listening, the speaking, the writing. It's not that. MCAS is the same MCAS everybody else is taking.
And I just wanted to add, Sarah, to clarify.
Yeah.
Access is about language acquisition. So it's about where they are in the language acquisition, and there's five levels in terms of what supports they're going to need to ac- to acquire English. Um, MCAS is like Tanya is saying, the content-specific grade-level standards.
So the access is diagnostic in a way, just where they are and what, yeah.
Right, it's about their language, their ability to acquire the language. So are you a, like a beginner, like you have no English proficiency at all? Or are you on a level where we can just support you and give you a little bit of tutoring? So that helps us to determine what their uh, multi-language supports would be versus what their academic supports would be. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna?
So a question about, um, participation. So the only way for a student to not take the MCAS is to not show up, correct? Or can they come to school and just say, I don't wanna take the test? And how does that work?
Parents opt out. I know, I could say that part. Parents write ahead and say, my child will not be taking, um, MCAS. That's one way. Um, Tanya, you wanna talk about other ways?
Yeah, so if a student's not there, they, they won't take it. Um, is it possible for a student to say, no, I don't wanna take it? It's possible. I don't, I have not dig into the data to see if that's what is happening, but it is possible. I think one of the things, the unintended consequence of the twenty twenty-four vote was when it's not tied to graduation, students and families didn't necessarily see the, the need to take it, but it did not change the state law that required districts to administer it. And also the state law that puts MCAS as a part of the accountability metric for school districts.
Thank you. Uh, Deb?
Uh, Tanya, when you said twenty twenty-two was the first normal administration, um, I, I had the uh, experience of administering the MCAS for a semester, so I knew that there were post-COVID, there were changes in the threshold for these. Is, is twenty twenty-two when it went back to the regular, the, the normal threshold? Is that, okay, so that's.
Yes. Yeah, that's what I mean by the first regular post-COVID administration, where all the, the rates and the way that they rate it were the same.
So then, if I could just elaborate a little bit for Sarah, so that you get a raw, raw score, but what that raw score translates into competency or meeting or exceeding was changed post-COVID. It was, the numbers were different. So the types of, um, comparisons that you're looking at when a, a score gets mapped into a category has to do with what year you took it post-COVID. And is that why there's no, um, comparison data for science? This was the first year that there's, that, that science is being administered again?
So science, um, the science doesn't have an administration comparison because it doesn't take it every year. Our students in tenth grade take it every year, but it's not, it wasn't the, a part of the actual, um, it was like piloted, kinda like civics right now.
Okay.
Civics is being piloted for middle school.
Yeah.
Yes, so science was tested, but it was not, hold on, I'm sorry. Are you talking about the growth? I'm talking growth. The growth is not there?
Right, yes, the growth.
So the growth doesn't, the growth has to have a similar comparison. So if you look at the, um, little note, MCAS for science isn't only given in fifth, eighth, and tenth grade. So in order for them to compare, it has to be consecutive years, and there is not consecutive. Like, I don't take science in ninth grade, so I can't compare the growth of it to ninth grade.
I understand, thank you.
And, yeah, cause I was gonna expand and say, so we can't do cohort comparisons year over year. What we can do is, like, this is how tenth graders in our regional high school, or how eighth graders in our middle school did on science a year before and how the next year. It would kinda look at how our instruction is shifting versus how the students are growing.
Right.
Thank you. Uh, I have last, Tim.
Thanks for this report, Tanya, um, and all the explanations. I, so you mentioned that the state is recognizing schools or, or districts that are returning to their pre-COVID level in terms of achievement, right, in terms of meeting and exceeding. Um, and so that's the carrot. What's the stick? And, uh, what, what might that look like? When might we expect it? And I think the same applies to participation rates. I don't know if the state is recognizing districts for getting above ninety-five percent participation rates. Um, but at some point, the state is gonna say, okay, now, now we need to figure out another way to get districts to perform on MCAS the way we want them to. What does that look like?
So, um, our accountability report is what actually is where some of that measure goes into. So for not meeting the ninety-five percent participation rate for changes in our data. So, um, the accountability report, if you go to the last page and you click on, um, the state, this, the school and district profile, you can find the accountability report in there. And that's where they do classifications for, for us. So I guess, when you think about the stick part of it, DESI gives designations based on your accountability rating. And so for us, our stick is that we are now in requiring assistance or need of intervention, um, because of participation. So, um, what does that look like? They encourage us to improve. There is not, um, a physical kind of mandate stick that I can, that I know of right now, but I'll, I'll dig in and see if there's something, um, just to make sure you have that information.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tanya.
You're welcome.
Anna, you had one follow-up question?
Uh, just a quick comment. I, I think that the school committee needs to put out a statement to the community about the importance of participating and taking the MCAS exam, showing up and doing, um, while we are not placing any kind of make it or break it, sort of, the, the, the test doesn't decide your fate. It does, it is still a required thing to do while you are a student at Amherst Regional Schools. And we need all parents and all students to understand that this is still a required participation exam. And then I think also the superintendent and the administration need to also put out a statement very similar to the absenteeism, encouraging parents, telling them how important this is, how it is a requirement, and that um, even though you don't have to pass the exam, you do have to take the exam. But I think that, just, i- if parents are opting out, they don't understand. They're, they're like, well, my, my kid does, my kid does horribly on exams, that testing is not a good measure of their academic skills. But that doesn't, that's not the point. The point is, the school needs you to take the exam. We need to, we can still learn stuff from the exam, even if it isn't about passing your student or, uh, you know, or graduating. It's about learning, and we need every single student to participate. And I think that a very clear message is what's needed.
Uh, Deb, your hand was up?
Yeah, I just wanna emphasize that one of the reasons that so many people voted to not have this as a requirement is for many, well, there's many different reasons. One is that it is really disruptive to the learning process. I can't tell you what running these tests through these schools does. It just turns things upside down. But I do think we can appeal to our community that this gives us information as a district, as it was originally intended to, MCAS, to inform us about our practices and, and appeal to them to participate so that we can make our instruction better.
All right. Thank you so much, Tanya.
Thank you all.
All right. Now it's still the Tanya Show.
It's still the Tanya Show. This is a great evening for Dr. Z. I get to watch. I am so proud of my team. They are so dynamic, so I'm just here to. Thank you, Dr. Z. Well, one of the consequences from the vote of twenty twenty-four was it removed the MCAS as the competency, competency determination of ability to, to get CD that way, which meant we had to create a CD policy, which you might think, hold on, Tanya, we did this last year. Yes, we did. And so now we have to do it again because DESI put out additional guidance. So I created an executive summary for everyone at the top, so you'll see what was changing, as well as linked the DESI guidance for there. So you'll notice that there's, it's really just more, um, I think it's clearer, it provides clearer information for, for families so that they'll know. Um, this year, however, we also have to submit the policy, uh, to DESI once it's been approved by regional school committee. So what I'll do is I'll just walk you through the executive summary, and then we can dive in and take a look at, um, particular pieces if you have questions there. Uh, so first thing, that in twenty twenty-seven, there's gonna be an expansion of the, um, of CD requirements for the class of twenty twenty-seven. They're gonna also have US history as a part of it. So right now, we have English, math, science. US history is going to be one of the courses that, um, they take a look at in terms of requiring CD. Uh, demonstrating mastery, they wanted us to define it more, um, clearly, cause, uh, most school districts last year had a broad definition of what mastery was. And so they gave some more language around mastery and what that looks like. They also talked to us about, um, having specific coursework aligned. So they gave us a list of courses, and we are simply to see which courses that we offer that align to understanding and meeting the standards that are in that particular content area, be it science, math, English, art, and twenty twenty-seven history. They also focused on equity and access. They wanted to make sure that we had distinct policies and procedures for our students with disabilities, our English learners, and our late-enrolling students. So thinking about, I'm a junior and I moved here, how do I show CD? Um, since it's a part of, um, what's required, and so I shouldn't be held back just because I wasn't in Massachusetts for grades nine and ten. Um, there's also specific works, um, around, um, individual education plans and things like that, um, aligning it for our EL students to um, WIDA standards, as well as IDDA, which is for our special, um, education students. There's also a statement about MCAS being used in limited, um, circumstances. If I earned CD prior to January twenty twenty-five, when the new law went into effect, I still keep it. If I earned it through MCAS, I still retain that particular thing, and I don't have to do something new to earn CD. Um, there's also, um, they wanted us to outline a clear appeals, um, policy. So students will be able to request a review of their, um, transcripts if they felt that they didn't earn CD and they believe they should have. And then we had to make sure, which is part of the compliance and transparency, we have to now submit our CD policies once approved by school committees to, uh, DESI, because it has to be, um, submitted that way so that DESI has uh, information on every district. And so what we did was, um, we went back to the drawing board with the same group. We called back our de- uh, department leaders from the high school, along with SSO, and, um, our MLE department, um, principals, APs, everybody around the table, taking a look at what DESI required us to do in that policy link that you see at the top. And we simply went through and made sure we addressed everything. So our job, we started in, into September, um, through, um, almost the beginning of November, making sure that we had everything written. I worked with the policy, the subcommittee, policy subcommittee, to make sure I addressed the things that they, um, had questions on. And so we bring it to you for, um, for the first reading, and we have to submit it to DESI by December thirty-first, and then we have to post it publicly, um, and also get it, um, disseminated in multiple languages, uh, once it's been approved. So with that, those are the changes. You'll see it's expanded in terms of the way it's written out compared to last year, and I'm happy to take questions or um, suggestions if you have them.
Thank you, Tanya. Any questions, suggestions? Tim?
Thank you again, Tanya. Um, does this have any impact on, um, monitoring and assessment in terms of systems or, you know, staff training, things of that nature, or is this already, is this all information that we're already collecting in one way or another, and it just needs to be funneled into the GEM's, uh, web portal?
So yes and no. Uh, there are, because there are multiple ways to show mastery, so if you think about, um, mastery written there, we either benchmark assessment or assignment, it could be a portfolio, or it could be some other measure of work that could look different. And so departments, what they did was they took time to go through and say, okay, which one of our assessments or our assignments could be used to really codify that the student has shown mastery of the standards for this particular course. So that work is being, is ongoing, and they're working to finalize that. So that is a system that's being put in place to make sure we know exactly which assignments, which tests, and how are we tracking it, those kinds of things. So those levels of systems have to be put in place, and they're currently being worked on at the high school. Um, in terms of training, it's, um, really isn't training for teachers. What it is, is making sure that we have built in those uh, systems to make sure we know the student, this student took these particular things, they have met CD, so that it follows the student, and that record-keeping is, um, really accurate, so that students get to their senior year and will know already they've met this in those courses. So it's just really making sure that we follow along the transcript process, which currently happens, but we have to be more intentional now because we're doing that record-keeping of our own. DESI is no longer doing it by saying, oh, they passed the MCAS, so now we have it. And thank you for that question.
Yeah, follow-up. I, yeah, I think you already said this. Is, is this an annual reporting process or more frequent? And, uh, I guess my, the real question I'm getting at is I'm wondering if it could be presented to the committee as well, once it's finalized and reported to the state.
So the one thing that does happen, um, would be, I think it would be at the end of the school year, once, um, graduation, you know, after we've done transcripts and we have the graduation of this many students graduated, these students didn't, this is why they didn't graduate, those kinds of things, when they do the review of transcripts. So I, I don't believe it'll be ready, let's say, they graduate in June and we want it in July. I think it's one of those things, similar to MCAS, where you would need to wait till about this time to take a look to see where we are.
Okay, yeah, that, that makes sense. I think it would help me as a committee member to, um, be regularly familiar with it, whatever that regular period is.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, William?
I was, was gonna say that Tanya did work with the policy team, so thank you for all your work on this. Um, a question that, and I think you answered, but I can't remember. So part of this policy is that if students from two thousand three to two thousand twenty-four didn't receive, they can request it to, to, for us to reconsider a diploma for them or not? So I wanna make sure that the, the public hears that. If you didn't get one, you can now, with this new policy, you can request one. Did we have a number of kids?
Yes.
You did, but I couldn't find it.
It's, it's, uh, fifteen students, and I'll send, resend that email. That way you can share it with the committee.
So it's fifteen students who didn't receive them from two thousand three to twenty-four?
Because of the CD policy. I just wanted to, uh, make sure everybody understands that particular thing. So because of CD, there were fifteen students. In some years, there were zero, but, um, there were fifteen students collectively from two thousand three to two thousand twenty, uh, four that did not, um, who are now eligible to ask for us to review their transcript to see if they would qualify under this new CD policy.
Thank you.
They have to request it in writing. They have to request it in writing.
Great, thank you. Uh, Sarah?
Yeah, my question was also about record-keeping. So will report cards, for example, explicitly indicate that you have, you know, you've achieved competent, competency in English ten honors or whatever? I mean separately from you passed, it's like, yes, you, you, we can tick that box for you. So they can keep track.
Um, that is not something that I thought of, but I will take that down and send it back to TNL.
Um, and I, and, and follow-up on what you just said, or what William and you were discussing. Two thousand three, that was a long time ago. I mean, would we have the, i- i- does DESI require us to go back that far or that's our choice? And, and, and are we really gonna be able to have the records or the, like, the portfolio of work? Or know what the syllabus and the, I mean, are we gonna be able to make a determination for someone who graduated twenty-two years ago?
So great question. And that is uh, one of the kinks in the uh, plan around CD going back as far. So DESI does keep records and they had records um, that I could check electronically and um, you can see from two thousand six to two thousand twenty-four. I had to reach into the archives and ask, send an email requesting the, the data for two thousand three, twenty, uh, two thousand four and two thousand five. And they sent me the number of students that did not get uh, a diploma because of CD, which was zero in all three of those years, which was the very beginning of this new law. But in terms of transcripts, I think that's where we'll take, have to take a look to see what does that mean. Here, we're talking about particular classes and some of those years, these classes weren't there. So I think this is going to do a little bit more digging and a lot of, of more research around, how do we help these fifteen students see if they actually met the mark for, for CD? There's an unknown there right now.
I could imagine that it may not be able to determine. So, okay.
Yeah, I have a follow-up on that. Just, I, I think it's not on the district to notify those fifteen students. I think it's on those fifteen students to come to us and request it.
Correct.
And, under this policy.
Right.
We're not seeking students out.
No, I know.
They, but I, that's why I'm saying, I hope people that are listening.
Yes.
Look and see if they know anyone that could do this, right? Because we're not going, we're not gonna notify people.
Right, will there be anything other than a transcript to review that might aid the determination? That's all.
And one of the things, I think, I, I'm not sure where we are there yet, so we're gonna have to take a look at it. But there are equivalent measures. So it, the, there is language in the policy that says our district certified equivalent measure. So where we can't find out, we might um, have to choose to say, here's the equivalent measure that we're looking at. But right now, at this moment, I'm not sure where, where we would go if a student came back. I think the first year we had one was two thousand six where someone didn't graduate from, uh, because of CD.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, so thank you for putting this all together. I like how it, it meets all the new state requirements and I know they have a new commission and there could be more state requirements coming down the line. But, but I just like the way that it meets all of those and also takes into account some of the really like beautifully written curriculum that we have at the high school, the work that our instructors have done and how, how like it robustly includes some of those courses as things that will count for your, um, for your competency determination. And I also like that it will help folks who, looking back with that look-back criteria, who didn't pass their MCAS and maybe that's what held them back from getting a diploma. Like, that's just a big deal. I think it's a really very nice um, feature in the law that came. I have two questions. The first one is, what grade do you have to get in those classes to show um, to show competency? Like, I guess I have a suggestion. I know that a D is a passing grade, but I don't think it's good enough. And um, then the second one is, I noticed the grad requirements don't have a language and I know that can be tricky for some folks and that there can be reasons behind that. But I would wonder if it wouldn't be possible to have a language requirement and then have exemptions to it as opposed to not having language as a grad requirement? Or if we're even really talking about grad requirements today and that's just something that was included in the presentation?
Uh, so thank you first of all. And I would like to publicly thank the group, our department leaders are really just a wonderful group of people to work with. They um, really took time to make sure that we reflected the work that's being done and creativity of the work that's being done at the high school. In terms of passing, DESI has language that says passing. So I don't know that we can put something other than a passing grade because we have to submit what passing is for us. So it is DESI's policy that the criteria or that the, the floor is passing. So um, I don't know that we can say you have to pass at a certain rate, but I will um, take, take some time to look before the next um, reading.
Thank you.
And, and then with the language requirement, so no, we're not talking about graduation requirements here. However, I believe um, most of our students, actually I took a look at it just to make sure. In last year's graduating class, um, there were twenty-two students who didn't have a language um, with their diploma. Um, so it is um, looked at separately and I think set by you all.
Thanks.
Thank you, Tanya. And finally, Deb?
Uh, yeah, this looks like an inordinate amount of work, but also a very thoughtful amount of work. I mean, I, it, removing that testing bar allows for a much more nuanced assessment of the students and their skills. So I really appreciate all the work and hopefully you don't have to do it all over again. I, I had a couple of questions. One was, there's, there's the requirement to get a diploma, a high school diploma, set by the state. And then there's a requirement for fulfilling a certain number of credits at the high school. Is, is, is the credit part now just going away entirely? Is the, this what's requi- just passing these particular courses and del- demonstrating that level of mastery? What allows a student to get an A R A test diploma?
So, so I wanna clarify. So um, DESI has a recommended, like MasCor is a recommendation, it's not the requirement for the state. Each school district sets their local graduation requirements, which is what is included on ours. So our local graduation requirements are still um, something that students have to do. In addition, they now also have to do CD based on um, the document here. So those two things are what helps the student graduate, the CD requirement and our local graduation requirements.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, thank you for that. That's, that's helpful and confusing, but important to, to understand. It looks to me like beyond changing the courses and the numbers and the assessment ma- method, there's, in, in this IKFE, the, the CD proposal, there's a less um, ability for, what, what, what did you call it in the last time? Sorry. Educational Assistance Plan used to be much more tailored to an individual student? I- is that correct? And is there, i- is that required by DESI? Or is that something that the team put together? How did, how did that change? If you could speak to that, please.
Sure, the change was that instead of calling it an individual education plan, it could be a portfolio. Um, so if you look back at page uh, number three, for students to show three, it can be a benchmark assignment or assessment. A portfolio project or an equivalent measure identified by the district. So it's giving more flexibility that there doesn't have to be this robust plan written for each child. We can use different measures based on um, students that have a particular needs. Let's say around our SE students, they still have SE courses that can meet those standards. It's possible they can do a, a portfolio if they're unable to meet certain benchmarks. So it just allows more flexibility versus saying there's this rigid plan. So I can look individually at it, um, different assessments or a different course, that kind of thing.
So it is more open for students' individual needs or individual skills and strengths than it was before?
We, I, we believe so.
Okay.
Because it, it's aligned more to, uh, because we can look at benchmark assessments. So does that benchmark, and there's a portion in there where we talk about modifications based on students' SE needs or language needs. So I can do that modifying for the assessment without having to create, which we had to before, a individual education plan. I could just have the assessment modified based on needs if the student's qualified for SE or EL services, those kinds of things.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Anything further? Excellent. Thank you so much, Tanya, for the Tanya Show.
Thank you.
Um, okay. So next up, we have our consent agenda, which has many, many minutes. Thank you, Tim. Um, it also has many, many warrants.
The ones for October.
For October. Thank you, William. Uh, we also listed here is a um, very generous gift. Is there anything anyone would like to pull out of the consent agenda? All right, excellent. It is approved then. I would like to say a very special thank you to our anonymous donor for their thirty thousand dollars uh, to support high school, studio arts, performing arts, and the engineering department. So wholly, moly, thank you, thank you, thank you. All right. Future agen-
Sorry, Queen of Honor. I think we actually have to vote on the consent agenda. I think you have to move the consent agenda and then we vote on it all at once.
Okay.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Great, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda. Perfect, done. Now moving on to future agenda planning. Um, to give you all a little sneak peek, uh, we will be coordinating a joint meeting for um, hopefully early in December, which the three committees will look at a first read of a whole mess of policies. Twelve, we'll have twelve, great, okay. Um, we will have, uh, I think we are looking to vote on our strategic plan. We will have our annual HR report. We will have uh, the twenty-six, twenty-seven calendar first read. Yep, Sarah?
So this joint meeting in early December, this is separate from our December ninth meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Good.
Uh, we also have slated for our own December meeting, um, if there are any new courses of study at, at the high school, if there are any sabbatical requests, we will have our first sneak peek at our FY twenty-seven draft budget. And we will need to vote on policy K, IKFE, the competency determination. And are there any other agenda items anyone has a pressing need for that they would like to bring up now? Otherwise, you're welcome to email me. Okay. We do not have an executive session tonight. We have a chair that has a draft agenda that she continually reuses and apparently also continues to forget to delete that when she posts the agenda. So there is no executive session tonight. Sorry, kids, I know.
We could just go over to that room for a while.
I mean, would anybody like to make a motion?
I will move that we adjourn.
Second, Jennifer.
All those in favor of adjourning? Look at us, this is eight-ten, kids, good job.
That was a long agenda, too.
I know, I thought I was.
All right, good job. Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody.